Alicia Giroca.
Sure, Commissioner Sanderson?
Here.
Commissioner Duffy?
Here.
Commissioner Moore? Commissioner Oatfield?
Here.
Commissioner Minketan?
Here.
Commissioner Martinson?
Here.
Commissioner Tew? Commissioner Hauser?
Here.
And Chair Goesch?
Here.
I don't think you'd call me vice chair.
Yeah, I mean, I have no idea. Actually, but thank you to Commissioner Sanderson and Duffy for joining us today. And Commissioner Moore is not coming to today's meeting and doesn't have a staff as far as... So this is it. The next thing on the agenda is the land acknowledgement. And I wanted to share that Monday, October 14th, is Indigenous Peoples' Day in Berkeley. I believe it's a city holiday as well. And on Saturday, October 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., is the Indigenous Peoples' Day Powwow in Indian Market at Civic Center Park. Anybody else want to share anything related to Indigenous news or anything else, say reflections? Moving on to order of the agenda. We only, well, we have one action item on the agenda today, so assuming nobody here wants to change anything. Remind me, do we need a, do we need a vote on order of the agenda? Okay, and then we move on to public comment on subjects not included on the agenda. So for the folks who are here, if you want to speak on anything that's not on the agenda, and we have the middle housing general plan amendments on our action items, this is the time to do it, and you have two minutes. Go ahead, get them.
Right over here.
Sure.
Sorry, I'm a little disorganized, but I haven't plugged in all my equipment yet. But on Monday night, we had the presentation on middle housing, so I want to thank the planning commissioners who were present for that. Thank you very much. And one of the things that was not investigated was the impact of cutting down trees and more hardscape and what that might do in creating microclimate. And I wrote on this, I wrote about this actually earlier this year when I did a little report on a book called "The Heat Will Kill You First." And I also tied in the measurements of heat island effect in Portland when they had the Dome heat event a couple of years ago. And many people died in that heat event. But there was a scientist who went around the city and measured the temperature in neighborhoods with trees and neighborhoods without trees. And that's all available online. There are also studies comparing suburban areas to urban areas, which are highly developed with hardscape, and the difference in temperature. So I think that we actually could make a better analysis of, we could actually make an analysis of what would happen if we really changed the architecture in Berkeley from homes and areas where we have trees and vegetation to bigger buildings with lots of hardscape. And what seems to be very popular these days is painting those buildings in a dark charcoal gray, which I often comment, I know we're depressed, but we don't have to paint them gray. But that will retain more heat. So I would just say yes, if we think about it and look into it. Thank you for a few seconds, though.
Thank you. Planning staff report. Oh, same again. Plan staff. I think the only thing to, well, two things to report is just that next month, we're planning to bring forward the rezoning for the Gilman Gateway, the Pacific Steel site. So that's going to be on the agenda. And I think, Justin, you wanted to announce another committee meeting?
Yes. Consistent with the City Council's direction to staff on middle housing, we've been, we've been attending council member information sessions on middle housing. As Kelly had mentioned this past Monday, we did one at the library for District 4, Councilmember Travers District. And we have our next one scheduled for October 24th, which will be a joint meeting of council members Taplin and Kessirwani at the Berkeley Adult School or the Longfellow Middle School temporary campus, 5:45 on October 24th.
I want to say, when we looked at our calendar for next year, I don't think we should have a meeting the day after next day. I just keep noticing, I'm like, how did we, how did we say yes to that? We might need each other. Yes, that's also true. That's also true. If you can't, if anybody is not able to make it, please let staff and your councilperson know ahead of time. Chairperson's report, I don't have anything from Chair Vincent, so moving on to committee reports. We don't have any committees right now that I know of. So we move on to approval of minutes. Anybody want to move on that or have comments? I appreciate that you're adding a little bit of detail. Feel free to add as much as you like, and I move on to a report. Second. Thank you. All right, we'll call over the minutes. Commissioner Sanderson? Comis- Commissioner Duffy? Commissioner Moore is absent. Commissioner Oatfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Minketan? Commissioner Martinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tew?
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goesch? Yes. Future agenda items or other planning-related events? This is from commissioners, if there's anything that you want to talk about or are aware of. Do you want to share?
Yeah, state legislation process wrapped up a couple of weeks ago. Governors signed a bunch of housing bills. Yeah.
Anything else for folks? Staff, anything? So then we'll move on to our only agenda item, sorry, only action item, which is public, which is a public hearing on middle housing, general plan amendments. And Justin will be presenting. And this is sort of a, and Justin can speak to it, but it's a follow-up on the middle housing ordinance that we talked about earlier that went to City Council. And based on their feedback, there are changes. They accepted some of what we sent and had additional comments.
Sorry.
It's like later. And had additional comments. So this is coming back to us, to the Planning Commission, to approve the general plan amendments and to make sure they're consistent with the direction that City Council gave after considering our recommendation. And Justin, you can add more if you want to that. So let me just say, Justin will present. We'll get some clarifying questions from commissioners. We'll then go to the public and have public comment. We'll close the hearing, and then we can ask additional questions or make comments. And then we will be doing the recommendation in form of a resolution. So, yeah.
Great, thank you. Chair Goesch, members of Planning Commission, Justin Horner, Planning Department staff. Tonight, we request that you hear a staff recommendation and hold a public hearing on a set of general plan amendments related to the middle housing zoning changes. Just a little bit of background, you likely recall that the Planning Commission held a public hearing in February of this year to consider zoning changes to encourage middle housing and made a recommendation to the City Council. At your April meeting of this year, you held a public hearing to consider a number of general plan amendments related to the recommendation you made in February. Both your recommendations on the zoning ordinance changes and the general plan amendments were brought to the City Council together, which held a public hearing on July 23rd, 2024. At that meeting, the City Council provided direction to staff to revise the recommended ordinance and, among other actions, to conduct a further review to ensure consistency between the general plan and the City Council's recommendation. First, I'd like to summarize the differences between the Planning Commission's recommendation and the City Council's direction to staff. In general, the City Council adopted the Planning Commission's recommendations with respect to the middle housing zoning changes. However, there were a few notable differences, which I've noted here in the slide. Probably most significantly, the Planning Commission's recommendation included the hillside overlay zone, while the City Council's direction excluded the hillside overlay zone pending the completion of the city's evacuation study. Additionally, the City Council added a maximum density standard, which is something the Planning Commission did not recommend. The City Council's height standard differed from the Planning Commission's recommendation in that the, your recommendation was a 28-foot maximum average height and a 35-foot maximum height, while the City Council settled on a single 35-foot or three-story maximum height standard. Additionally, the City Council simplified the setback requirements. While your recommendation included reductions in the front and rear setbacks, the City Council's direction went even further, requiring only a five-foot minimum front or five-foot minimum rear setback. Importantly, however, both the rear and front setbacks are to add up to 20 feet. This was to provide flexibility for the position of buildings on a lot. And finally, the City Council added a provision that was not included in the Planning Commission's recommendation. As the recommended zoning changes permit single-family homes with a zoning certificate and also include expanded development standards, there was a concern that the changes would result in larger single-family homes instead of the multi-unit buildings that are the primary intention of the middle housing changes. Therefore, the City Council included a new provision that limited the size of single-family homes on a single lot to 2,500 square feet or 50% of the lot area, whichever is larger. And an applicant can apply for an AUP to exceed this standard. To appropriately reflect the City Council's new recommendation and consistent with the direction to review the general plan, staff presents you with a set of general plan amendments. These amendments can be placed in three separate buckets. Bucket number one includes general plan amendments that are exactly the same as the general plan amendments you reviewed and recommended at your April 3rd meeting. The second bucket consists of general plan amendments that you reviewed and recommended at your April 3rd Planning Commission meeting, but that are slightly revised to reflect the new development standards included in the City Council's recommendation. And the third bucket is made up of entirely new general plan amendments that you have not seen before. This slide includes the three general plan amendments that are exactly the same as the amendments you reviewed and recommended in April. These include an amendment removing the mention of the R1A zoning district, which was combined with the R2 district in the zoning ordinance amendments, changes to the descriptions of three land use classifications, and a reduction in land use classifications from three to two. These amendments also include changes to the general plan map to reflect the changes in the number of general plan classifications. This slide includes the three changes that were revised from those that you saw and recommended at your April 3rd meeting. All three are revisions to descriptions of land use classifications in the general plan. The general plan guidelines require land use classification descriptions to include information about the zoning districts they cover, as well as summaries of permitted height and density standards. Given the changes to height and maximum density standards put forward by the City Council at their July 23rd meeting, these descriptions were revised to include updated numbers, and it's only the numbers that have been changed. The third set of recommendations are summarized in your staff report and included here in the slide, and I'll go through each of them briefly. These are general plan amendments that you have not seen before but resulted from the review of the general plan directed by the City Council. These amendments are not technically specific only to middle housing, but are updates to existing passages in the general plan that are outdated or do not reflect current land use policy. For example, the First Amendment revises a section in the introduction about encouraging infill development. Language has been added about state law requirements, programs in the housing element, and encouraging infill in low-density neighborhoods, not just downtown and along transit corridors. The second change is to a section of the introduction that discusses citizen participation. It adds language acknowledging that there are state and local policies that mandate timely review of housing projects and that these requirements must be balanced with citizen participation. This is particularly true, for example, as many housing projects would be approved with a zoning certificate under the middle housing zoning changes. The third change is to language in the land use element, which encourages new housing along transit corridors. Longstanding land use policy has been to encourage new housing in proximity to transit, usually understood as within a quarter or a half mile, and not just on parcels directly on transit corridors. The fourth change is to a portion of the land use element that states that it is the intention of the general plan to maintain existing zoning in low-density residential areas. This is inconsistent with the missing, or with the middle housing zoning changes, which quite overtly change existing development standards in residential areas. And the final change is a part of the urban design and preservation element, which states that it is the intention of the general plan to continue to require a use permit in public hearing for all residential development in the city as to allow public participation in the imposition of site-sensitive conditions. This statement directly contradicts the middle housing zoning changes, which not only include permitting residential development with a zoning certificate, but also puts forward objective standards that are not site-specific or subject to discretionary review. Thank you for your time and attention. Staff would request that you conduct a public hearing, make a recommendation to council on the proposed general plan amendments. Approval of a recommendation on the general plan amendments at this meeting would allow the zoning changes in the general plan amendments to be considered by the City Council as early as November of this year. But the City Council has not scheduled the follow-up hearing to their July 23rd hearing. And that's it for my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin. Are there any questions from commissioners? Is anybody here to make public comment on this item? Anybody else that's want to share? Go ahead.
Oh.
Do you want the microphone or do you just want to speak with normal voice?
Can you hear me? So I don't need the microphone then?
I can.
Yeah, well, I'm used to speaking, so I guess I'm pretty loud. Thank you, Justin. I didn't see that nice presentation in the agenda. Can we have that posted somewhere?
It'll go up tomorrow.
It'll go up tomorrow. And the one from Monday night, will that go up tomorrow too?
Yeah, I don't know if it's going up tomorrow, but it's going up.
Okay, all right. So as I said Monday night, with all of our push for middle housing, since we know now that this really isn't going to give us affordable housing, we're just, we're upzoning and it will give us probably a lot more market-rate housing, which when, which is not what we actually needed in this community is we need affordable housing. We're way behind on meeting our affordable housing target. If any of you have ever read Six City, the book, it goes well into how adding more density to any lot and any parcel increases the value of the land and therefore increases the value and the cost and the rent or the purchase of the building. So I'm not really sure what we're trying to accomplish with all of our changes in middle housing. So, but I understand that this is, this is the push of the city, is that we're going to do middle housing. And yet, upzoning takes us in the opposite of direction of what our need is, since our need is affordable housing and not, and not market rate. And I still don't have a good feel that we actually even need this because when I go to meetings, as I did Monday, and I hear from the rent board that we've got 40% vacancy in some of our big buildings, you know, why, why are we doing this if we have housing already existing that it just isn't being rented? And we also have to wonder if the app, RealPage, is being used here in Berkeley, as it is in other cities, to maximize profit while leaving units vacant. And Fresno is suing on you, Page. RealPage. Thank you.
Carol Morosovick, I will actually follow up on what Kelly stated. It seems as if we're hearing a lot that the intended purpose of the middle housing is to make up for the sins of the past. And if that's the case, then why wouldn't we target that housing towards those populations who have been redlined in the past, who have been excluded in the past by exclusionary housing? It doesn't appear that we're doing this. I don't have the impression that this has to do with vacancies and rentals. Maybe I'm wrong. I thought it had to do with actual home ownership. And if it does, do we not want to direct it towards those populations? It seems as if there should be an orientation that talks about, that is having a discussion. How do we really make this housing affordable so it is, it is equitable? So it does draw the persons who have otherwise been excluded in this community? How do we make this less about gentrification and more about the affordable aspect? So when I hear about fourplexes, I keep thinking, why aren't we, why isn't the city design a certain number of those as fiveplexes so that the affordability is required? And why isn't it being set in such a formula that affordable really means affordable, not just less expensive than the other four units? And that the city is not providing for, if necessary, a subsidy, a loan, somehow for that fifth unit to be designated and be accessible to persons who live here who are not upper-middle-class income? Because that's what we're talking about, upper-middle-class, upper-class income. We're talking about units that will be...
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is John Covany. I've lived most of my, lived all of my adult life here in Berkeley. And as of late, I can call myself a developer. Now, I've been a contractor for a number of years, and I can speak to the issue of affordable housing because it is very difficult, if not impossible, to make something, a thousand-square-foot unit for less than $500 a square foot. That's substantial. Two-bedroom home like the ADU that I built in my backyard so that my daughter can maybe afford to live in the city that she grew up in and, you know, put in lots of sweat equity that just doesn't come through there. So to me, I would like to see a thousand of these things bloom. You know, the changes in the zoning to make it easier. Having run the gauntlet of the City of Berkeley zoning department, which I find to be very dysfunctional and not user-friendly, I really hope that in this plan that we come up with something that is much more oriented towards how the people who live here can divide big houses up into multiple units, can build ADUs as we're familiar with, whether they're existing structures or not. But the other thing I want to address is that I'm really concerned about what's going to happen to the character of Berkeley. I live on a block quite close here that has, you know, one of the Cracker Box, whatever they call them, apartment buildings that were stopped by the neighborhood preservation ordinance. Yet at the same time, there's two, two-story, multi-unit buildings that were built in the 1920s. I like that diversity. I like that heterogeneity and texture of what the city is. And is Berkeley supposed to be building out to 150,000 people? To 200,000 people? If we make Berkeley not what Berkeley used to be, then we will have truly ruined things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, I think we'll close the public hearing and then we can take questions. So if somebody wants to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Actually, can I just?
Oh, yes, please. You can speak from the chair if that's easier for you.
Yeah, I think I just want to, I'm new to this whole issue, so I apologize if this is work that's already been done. But I think, I'm just hoping that it's also considered, you know, parking, because like, not everyone can ride a bike everywhere or walk everywhere. But, you know, a lot of the parking that's been in the city is gone now as these high-rises go up. And I do understand that needs, maybe needs to happen in places. But, you know, I, I just want to kind of reiterate what some of these other folks said and hope that some studies are being done about the livability of Berkeley because it's a wonderful place and we want to keep it that way. And then, you know, what, what goals are we trying to achieve with this and making sure that we're doing that? So, thank you.
Do you need the name of the speaker? No, you're fine. Okay, last chance. Anybody else who hasn't spoken? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Minketan?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Sanderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Duffy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore is absent. Commissioner Oatfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Minketan?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tew?
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goesch?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Okay, thank you. And we can take your comment, question, just then.
Okay, great, thank you. I know this is out of turn because we had, we had a chance prior to ask you questions about the presentation. And I know now we can do it again. First, I just want to say thanks for everybody coming in person because there's no online option here. On the zoning board, I'm used to having both and juggling both and making sure that even those who aren't here can speak. Mike, I have a quick question just, I know it wasn't put up here in front of us, but it is in our packet, and it's the land use diagram. And I know there are changes, of course, to the land use diagram. You mentioned them in terms of consolidating the R districts. But that is before us this evening. Is that right? That, those, the changes in the land use diagram, right?
Correct, yeah, because we, there are currently in general plan three land use classifications that describe the middle housing zones. So there's R1, R1A, R2, R2A, and UR. And, but what we're doing, what we're discussing, the middle housing zoning changes, is we're consolidating R1 and R2, or R1A and R2. And so we're also consolidating the general plan maintenance classifications. We're going from three of those to two of those. And then we also need to change the map, just the colors on the map, to, to correctly indicate where those zones are. We are changing the boundaries of any of them, though.
So just to clarify, how the map changed with what we did at our last meeting?
Yes, that changes the same as what you did.
So what you're showing us is based on that April 3rd meeting. The colors have been changed. The, we changed like low, we made it, I guess, low-medium density?
Yeah, we had that discussion.
So that's the map that we're looking at, right? But you're asking for us to look at the amendments to the map and to the text at the same time?
Correct.
And make a resolution?
Correct.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
She said, no, well, go ahead.
Oh, I got you.
No, no.
I'll start back.
Okay. On the map, it says low-medium density, but in the text, it says lower density. I think we should probably update the map to match.
Good match.
Lower median density. Lower median density.
Nobody else? I have a follow-up question. Okay. I know, and I've been to the previous meetings of the planning commission and also a council regarding this, and that there were folks that did speak with regards to the boundaries. And we know that the boundaries are also something that have been historically fraught and are part of the solution here, could be part of the solution here. And when I look at the boundaries presented before us, I just have, I have a question, just a simple one, and maybe you've already addressed it. But in the proposed general plan land use designations, there are two areas of low-medium density residential, one around San Pablo Park and one adjacent to North Berkeley Park. And my questions are, or just one that came to mind more readily was, when we see the general plan goals around climate, TOD, how do we have a low-medium density residential district adjacent to North Berkeley Park? Maybe it's been addressed and discussed already, and that's why it's before us tonight. But if not, I think it's worth talking about.
If someone can respond?
Thank you.
So those areas, through the middle housing zoning changes process, remained R1 zones. And so R1 zones are characterized by this lower-medium density residential land use classification. So although the colors didn't change, you know, the underlying zoning is an upzoning and an expansion of development potential. And the definite, the new definitions in here, let's see, which is the main page that has the one that where we... On page seven of the staff report, where at the bottom, so low-density residential is the current land use description for these R1-zone areas. And so we changed it to lower-density residential, not low-density residential. And then also added that it's characterized by single-family homes and small multifamily structures. And also talked about the higher densities that are under the existing, are under the proposed development standards. So compared to the current definition, the definition is trying to represent multi-use character that's more dense than it is now. But it is still relatively lower density compared to the R2 and the R2A. I do know that the planning commission did consider, and I think the city council considered, further consolidation of residential districts, not just the R1A and the R2. There was even a proposal that there'd just be a single residential district for the whole city, you know, because are we preserving these relative inequalities even if we upzone everybody? Ultimately, the city council's direction was what's represented in the staff report before you today.
Did that answer?
Thank you. Yeah, we did talk about it. I still have to get to you, Commissioner. The lower and low. Low-medium, lower-medium, it's still not great. But I think we kind of made a decision at the last meeting to go with that, and I don't know if one is better than the other. But that's where we're at. Commissioner McAdams?
One feature of those areas, they look like this.
I love that.
Yeah, so I think in part it's the scale and the capacity. So you could put it in the other zone and pat yourself on the back, but you're not going to get that scale of development there. So then you're counting something in your arena goal that's never going to happen, so...
That is something we discussed, is the actual physical structure of the lots, that the lots may not be compatible with the kind of densities we're looking at in the sort of orange zones. But they do look strange on the map, because they're these islands. And just from looking at the map, it's not immediately clear to me that, you know, that the lots are smaller, at least in this section over here by San Pablo Park. It's not clear. Go ahead.
Well, I have a related question that possibly is self-evident to everyone else, which is that in the description of the, in the description of the new classifications, I wondered how the, how we got to the numbers? Like, what makes the difference between what this was before, say, one, just as an example, 1 to 10? To go from 1 to 10 to 1 to 50 is a big leap. And so I just, and which has sort of happened in all of the classifications. And I just wondered how you calculated those numbers. And then I think that one thing that would be interesting is if you could explain where there are places that look like those numbers so that we had an idea in our minds about what they were. But also mostly, I just want to know what the, how the calculation was that you got to the new.
On July 23, the city council directed us to prepare an ordinance that included specific development standards for minimum dwelling units per acre and maximum dwelling units per acre. The maximum dwelling units per acre numbers are captured in the motion that's included in the staff report. And the numbers are just the numbers that the city council came up with.
They said, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I'm just kind of curious. When I was reading it, it just seemed like they went, the change was great. And so I'm just wondering, you know, to say, 15 dwelling units per acre is really different than 10?
So page 19 of the staff report that has the city council minutes has, says exactly where, what the numbers are for each of these zones. So that's what you're doing, is you're taking these numbers and you're putting them in the right place in the general plan?
And I think part of the city, you know, I think the city council's thinking came from at least two different sources. I think, you know, these maximum density standards are very similar to what staff had recommended to you in February. In addition, I think the main thing is they sort of reversed engineered from a typical 5,000-square-foot lot and sort of said, okay, well, if we're going to be looking at six, you know, we want a maximum of six units on a 5,000-square-foot lot, what's that look like in an acre? And that's how you get that number.
That's also...
Can I follow up?
I did want to ask, you know, in the city council minutes, it talks about the num, well, in the, in the general plan, it talks about 132 persons per acre. And in the city council numbers, they use a different hearing. They talk about the number of units. So is there a reason that they're saying, they're asking for resulting in five units versus us, or the general plan is saying number of people? Like, what is the difference?
Right, we, we have tried to change the general plan as little as possible. So we did want to maintain some of the numbers they had in there. How we get to persons per acre is multiplying the dwelling units per acre by the average household size in Berkeley, which is 2.2 individuals.
Let me do a page with the ribbon.
I'm just hoping math's right when I say that.
That's a really important point, because there's a difference between people per acre and dwelling units per acre that makes a certain kind of assumption about who is living in the dwelling units and what kind of configuration they are. Also, what kind of configuration is being designed for the space. And so it would, I mean, it's a kind of a type of calculate, you know, what's the calculus for getting the numbers? Which, you know, sometime I'm sure, if I'm explaining it to, like, the council member that asked me about it, you know, it's nice to know this 2.2 is the average household size that we're talking about.
Is the one by the units per net acre, the one, does that actually lead to a calculation or not?
That should, all of that map should work. It should be, the maximum density should be 2.2 times, or population should be 2.2 times the density. I guess that's how we did it. And, you know, there's something also to keep in mind is these descriptions are describing areas of the city, not just development standards for new development, but actually what the existing development is too. I mean, almost all the development in these areas is already done, right? So that's another thing, too. So even though we're talking about these maximums that are, that characterize development standards that are more generous than they have been historically, likely these areas will be at lower densities and lower populations than represented here with the maximums.
Commissioner McAdams, then, question to a next question.
In the general plan, there's the definition of a low-density residential area?
Yes, there is.
Is that being struck? Because that doesn't really exist anywhere anymore with the ADU rules? Or is it being redefined?
It's being redefined as, so page seven and eight sort of show the general plan classifications. It used to be three, low-density residential, low-medium density residential, and medium-density residential. We got rid of the one in the middle, low-medium density residential. And then we have lower-density residential, which characterizes the R1 and the ESR districts. And then medium-density residential, which characterizes the R2, R2A, R3, and M.U.R.
So where do I read the new definition for lower?
It's on page seven of the staff report.
Thanks.
It's right on.
Why don't I see that on the map? Map says low-medium.
Oh, that was the issue.
That's what you said, right? So lower-medium, we have lower-medium, medium, and high, correct? Because I keep hearing you say lower, but not lower-medium. But you mean lower-medium, correct?
Right, we will have lower-density and medium-density residential. So lower and medium.
Okay.
I don't super-nousance, because that's not the middle housing zones.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Oh, yeah, another minor technical edit on the land use classifications for the mixed-use residential. The population density should be updated based on the city council direction. Page 29 of our packet, yeah.
Where are you seeing that it's not updated?
It's...
Which paragraph is it?
Page 29 of 32.
Medium-density residential, which paragraph?
That paragraph.
The mixed-use paragraph.
The mixed-use paragraph. No, but, oh, the middle. I have one.
Right, the very last, the very last line of that page. Don't worry, it's a technical change.
Mixed-use residential. Staff, do you have that?
I have that.
Commissioner Duffy?
Thank you. I just had a follow-up question regarding calculating persons per acre. And so is planning staff actively calculating conformance with the general applications for development? And calculating this number in terms of conformance with the general plan now? And keeping up with the numbers in terms of persons per acre? Is that how, this is a question, that's how?
Yeah, the zoning, the zoning is what controls the development individual parcels. This is, these are merit descriptions, these are not regulations.
Have you denied, have you denied development permits or suggested differently because it has reached this, the number of persons per acre before?
I don't know.
Commissioners, who haven't commented? Do you have anything?
Are we just questions still?
No, no, we're in discussion. Go ahead.
So I really appreciate all the work that staff has done, kind of reviewing and combing over all of this. And I attended the meeting on Monday night where Justin Horner presented to District 4 residents and other attendees about this. I, I'm probably going to abstain on these particular amendments, because I have concerns about the general plan amendments that were previously brought to this commission and discussed, and some of which were raised during the public comment, that as much as I think we need to go in this direction, we need more of this so-called middle housing. I live in what might be described by some as middle housing. We need transit-oriented development and greater density. I totally agree with the general gist of where this is going, but I feel like this proposal just hasn't really integrated some of the concerns raised by the community about avoiding gentrification and displacement, corporate, investor-owned development versus ordinary homeownership, you know, homeownership opportunities for ordinary low- and moderate-income people. And there's sort of a lot that's like outside the scope of what is presented to us here tonight that I feel like has gone unaddressed throughout this whole process. So I just wanted to say that, for that reason, I'll be abstaining on the vote on this proposal from staff. But I appreciate the staff's work on all of this very much.
Commissioner Sanderson, and then Commissioner McAdams?
So it's kind of odd that the general plan even has the density of people, because that changes over time. And it's not enforced. And whereas I could remember times when we did in the past enforce the number of unit density per neighborhood, but rarely. So is it possible to, practical to list these as, with an option to use a different standard? But I'm not even sure why they're in the general plan to begin with. I mean, we can't do anything with them, we can't enforce them. The numbers are kind of going to change over time as the size of households changes over time. And I know that you, and I fully respect that you're trying to change as little as possible. So you're not saying, ah, you know, we don't need this, let's take them out of all sections. But is there a way to do it so it's not, so it can be, it can be more flexible? Or should we just ignore it? I've been ignoring it for many years.
I was just going to respond that, you know, our land use element was adopted in 2000, there are different elements, 2001, 2002. And so, and current, many general plans in other jurisdictions that have been updated recently, or they don't use the metric that we're talking about. So I think that, you know, right now, the staff is undertaking an update of the city's disaster and preparedness and safety element, and also preparing a new environmental justice element. And the, you know, after that work, or not when it's done, but basically, a next phase of work would be looking at updating the land use element. So I think that what you're talking about on a global level in terms of changing those metrics and making everything up to date would be addressed during that work. But it is, it is, it is work that is now, you know, very old and not metrics that are used today.
I do think you faithfully represent the city council's representation. Your language is fine. I'm also going to abstain, and like Christina, it's for more broader reasons. I still think our map is lazy. And when we upzone and make every district the same, we are not increasing the amount of housing. What we're doing is increasing the opportunities for developers to select sites. And they're going to select sites where the differential between the existing housing and what they can build is greatest. So I would expect a lot of this development to happen exactly where it should not happen first, which is west of San Pablo, south Berkeley. I think that the council members in districts 1, 2, and 3 should be concerned about this, and that they should think about upzoning other areas first so that we relieve some market pressure first before bringing these other zones online. So I know we're using the old map and boundaries for our convenience, and I think that's a mistake. And I still think that the AUP is the right standard for new construction. I think a zoning certificate for dividing a house into multiple units is fine. But when we're talking about new construction, it's not...
when we're talking about new construction, it's not to slow it down or anything. But sometimes there are site-specific conditions that you want to place. And I'm concerned that if we move to zoning certificate, you all will not be able to apply your expertise to that site. In the same way, when we do mandatory judge sentencing, we restrict them from applying their expertise to a situation. So I still feel that for new construction, the AUP is the correct standard. And I just have a remaining question, which is, does this density standard, adding that to the general plan, affect how you will apply the density bonus? Because you've had such a complicated strategy for doing that over the decades.
Well, actually, the, one of the reasons we think so complicated is because we don't have density standards inside of our development standards. So development standards that include density standards will make it easier to calculate density.
And how does it work? Do you know that?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, whether we would, for example, you know, what is the base project? Yeah. And what would we do? Assume the biggest one as the base project?
So we don't know how it will work?
You would use the density standard that's in the zoning and then apply the density bonus to that standard. Right now, since we don't have density standards, what I'm sure you're familiar with, architects have to do is make a hypothetical project and then derive a density standard from the box that they can make within the zoning plus conditional use permits that they can, they can achieve under the zoning. So with having a density standard, then they can just apply the percentage to that standard, and it becomes much easier.
Any other comments?
This is in the thought exercise category, so tell me if it's not appropriate for making a question. You know, after our last meeting and after what happened at the council, you know, I'm usually a very pro-development density type person. I got to thinking about what were the ways in which might be possible to address some of the issues about density, particularly what you just talked about. And I'm wondering, you know, things like not allowing parcels to be consolidated or something like that in certain areas and stuff like that. And I'm wondering if that is the sort of thing that would typically, or there are ways in which we can think about how to have, to support high density, but have other kinds of triggers that keep, you know, that protect aspects of our desire to get more housing. And, you know, you know, I always like that cliche, whether or not it's true or not, you know, that market rate housing of today is affordable housing of twenty-five years from now, whether or not that's completely true, I don't want to talk about. But I mean, we want to get that housing built, so what can we do to, I mean, is that, is that, once we would put these development standards in here, does the city council have the ability to make nuanced changes or localized changes? Like how, where can we, and what kinds of things could we do where we're generally supporting development and density, but we're also, you know, looking at particular examples and having a method for addressing the kind of issues that you're talking about? I mean, I don't know what it is, that's why I got to thinking about the consolidation thing.
One thing that, and this kind of combines both sets of comments, is that you could phase some of these changes. To say, well, the council will come back and think, this has got to change over time and to have to, because it's kind of a shot in the dark, we're doing the best we can under the circumstances. But you could take the areas that are most vulnerable, the lower-income areas that are most vulnerable and where the parcels are small, and delay the change in zoning for two years or three years. I mean, the state does this all the time with state, state law. You know, that this is true, and then after this year, you know, it's going to go back to where it was. So that is, I don't know how it would affect the general plan, but at least in zoning, you can phase changes. So you don't have all the changes at once. And I don't know why you couldn't do it in the general plan as well. But we haven't gone that direction. I think people have been so anxious to help the market go everywhere. And I think some of the concerns that are at least raised, have been raised, and it's by people in at least District Two and Three, as saying, how, you know, we don't have any idea what impact this is going to have on lower-income households and smaller properties. Is it going to just, it will be less expensive? So will that mean there'll be more gentrification where people are most adversely affected by it, like I was going to say? You know, I live in the Elmwood, it wouldn't have an adverse effect in that area, I don't think. But it might, particularly low-income homeowners. And I know that, I've talked about this before, and it is a major concern of mine, that the pressure on low-income homeowners who are barely holding on to their home, instead of helping them, like an ADU can help them because it brings in rent. But the pressure for them to sell out is much greater. And you continue then to have the change in population that you've been seeing the last sixty years in South Berkeley. The black population percentage in South Berkeley is a tiny fraction of what it was before they implemented rent control, for example. So it's, I mean, that's, that's one option is to maybe, you know, just a little of that as a way to consider the, I'm just, I'm just now...
So because this is thought experiment, and it's not actually adding to our task today?
No, I think it's...
No, no. If I may speak as chair.
Sure.
My goal is to make sure we stay focused on what we're here to do today. I can allow a little bit of thought experiment, but these are not things that we haven't talked about before on this commission, so I'm also trying to manage that. So I would look to Commissioner Hauser to make any comments, and if not, I would like to make a comment, but I will wait to see if anybody else has anything to add.
Yeah, no, still, not, no, not at this time. But I don't, I also don't, I don't mind the thought experiments, I do think that these are directly related, you know, implications and things to be mindful, conscious of impacts of, impacts of what we're actually trying to accomplish. I wanted to jump in a little bit earlier about the people per acre. I think that is a very interesting data point, and I like to start thinking about it and capturing it. Like when I applied to expand my duplex, so my family lived there, we would never ask how many people are actually being housed here. So it would be interesting to bring this into the conversation, encourage homes to be full.
I guess that's it.
That's it. Hey, thanks for letting me piggyback on the thought experiments.
And thanks to our public commenters who came today, and if you came for the first time to a meeting like this, thank you for your voice, or if you've come many times, like I know Kelly has. I'll just say that I'm excited for this to move forward. This has been an extremely lengthy process, and I know the city council wanted more community workshops and more community engagement. Thank you, planning staff, for doing that. I would say I might share some of the same anxieties, but I think my, because we are making a lot of assumptions, which is to say that if, generally what I've heard is when somebody's low-income has a home, and especially in cases where somebody passes and their family inherits that, they have a very hard time figuring out what to do with that piece of property. And we, as Berkeley, might still lose that population. The things we've done so far have not helped keep, keep that population here. In fact, it has led to gentrification. But for me, this is an opportunity for someone to sell the house because it can become multi-unit, and as they do in countries like India, each of the siblings might actually get one of those properties. That happens a lot with us. In large houses that are hard to maintain and have high property taxes, nobody wants to live there anymore. People in other parts of the world live in middle housing and adapt large homes to these kind of things. And I will admit that it's from a touchy-feely point of view, it's hard to see some of these big houses go away. But overall, it helps keep families together and allows someone to benefit from what we're doing. So from an individual perspective, I think it sometimes helps people. From the fabric of a city perspective, this is just one thing we're doing. We passed a strong demolition ordinance. You know, we've been working on many pieces of this. Not everything happens in one place. So the thing for us to do as commissioners and as citizens is to keep an eye on every single piece of this puzzle. And I don't expect for everything to happen in one place, which is why I'm going to be voting for this very strongly. And I think until we do it, we don't know. And I would say middle housing especially, from what I've talked to consultants, it's very, very hard to pencil. It's extremely hard to pencil. And I think that's why council is so focused on not creating barriers to it at this moment. Because I live in middle housing, I live in an old house that was converted into four units. I didn't want to live in a single-family home. I appreciate my neighbors, I appreciate having people to live with, and I think other people should be afforded that opportunity. If I want to move, there is not another place like that for me to move to, because there's a huge lack of places like that, right? So everything that's available is a big multi-family home, that's like 1.5 million dollars. I mean, you know, I mean, so from a very practical point of view, I think many people are excited about this. If you are concerned about very tall housing, this also helps address that. It brings back a little bit of the organic development that we could have had in the city. So I think there are many reasons to support this while having reservations about how it might play out. And that's when we have to give it a little bit of a chance to breathe and see what happens. But maybe unlike removing single-family zoning restrictions that took, I don't know, what was it, how many years? Fifteen, more than that? How many years? We shouldn't wait decades.
Yeah.
To respond to something like this having an adverse effect. And I think that's our jobs as commissioners and as citizens, to keep an eye out for that. I think many parking lots hopefully will become, and that will help reduce the amount of asphalt as we build them walkable, have more density, it's going to reduce the need for cars and parking, hopefully help our businesses, so many of whom are really struggling right now, as we bring in like more families. And I've talked to so many families who want like a townhouse, or don't want, don't want a single-family home, they want the option of living more collectively. And I think Berkeley's a great place to sort of have us, encourage people to live more collectively. So I'm very excited about this. I just had one text comment, which is, that I had an issue with, which was right in the introduction, where it says, "In traditionally low-density residential neighborhoods." And I would like us to strike out the word "traditionally" because to me, it means nothing. And traditional, what is traditional? I mean, in other places, we're saying that historically, these same zones have had multi-unit housing until the neighborhood preservation ordinance came in. So I think it's okay to say in low-density residential neighborhoods. I tried to think of a different way, but I landed on just removing "traditionally" because it's kind of meaningless and again internally in conflict with what we're seeing somewhere else.
Absolutely.
Yeah. With that, I would, I would like us to move this forward. So if anybody wants to make a motion, we can still have discussion, but we can have a motion on the table if someone wants to accept staff's recommendations with striking the word "traditionally." And the correction that Commissioner Too made. I would entertain such a motion.
I'll make that motion. That we adopt the staff recommendation as proposed with changes in text that were mentioned in the map and in the introduction. Were there any, oh, well, there was another.
Yeah.
We just say technical changes that we've identified, there's at least three I know of.
Were there three?
Well, there's one of the...
Let's ask staff what they...
Yes.
I'd say, double-check and correct the math. Take another look at your maximum density calculation related to population, and then remove "traditionally" from the introduction section.
Anything else?
Is there anything we...
We have a second here. Let's take the second, and if anybody has any questions or more discussion, we can do that. Staff?
Okay.
Our, y'all, you understand, we can bring up the resolution so folks know what we're voting on.
From the packet? Do you want us to get it?
Is it easy to bring it?
Yeah.
And if not, folks can look at it and then act it. I don't think the agenda is...
Can that be part of the staff recommendation?
What? Well, we were doing this thing now where it's a resolution with all the wearers. As a lawyer, he might need that to be asked. I just want to make sure people know that this is, this is the recommendation. The recommendation takes the form of a resolution now. So where here would you incorporate the changes we suggested?
Can you move down? Keep going down. Oh, no, it goes up. It refers to attach it.
It's here now therefore be resolved.
Yeah, so now therefore be a resolved, no, I'm sorry. Yeah. You'll see at the bottom, now therefore be resolved, blah, 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 blah. The general plan text and map amendments included in Exhibits A and B of this resolution. So the changes, the three changes will be in Exhibits A and B.
Okay. What is it for A and B?
A is the map and B is the text.
Okay, got it. That's right, it said, it said, I lost. Too many charts and, even the general plan, the numbers, ADU is like listed, but then the page numbers are also ADU.
Yeah.
And that. Okay. Any discussion, feeling ready to vote?
All right, Commissioner Sanderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Duffy?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitehouse and Commissioner O'Keel?
Epstein.
Commissioner Middleton?
Epstein.
Commissioner Marson?
Yes.
Commissioner Chu?
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you, staff, for your work on this and really sticking with it. It's still not done, unfortunately. So just going to go back to council, and they haven't set a date, but hopefully soon.
I may add one comment, and I wonder if this is sort of fits into more like future agenda items or something related. And thanks to the great discussion from my fellow commissioners, again, sticking with the intent of what we're trying to create here and some of the public comments that were about, like what are we actually trying to accomplish? Are we addressing the problems that we're actually facing? Missing middle in particular, and preserve, you know, keeping communities and families here is going to rely on DIY development, like mom-and-pop type of development. And I wonder if we could even start, well, start looking at other ways we can really radically democratize development. And that might be, you know, stuff outside of the scope of this commission. But even, you know, trainings like, you know, access to capital, like I'm just trying to think through... through, thinking through all the permutations and barriers to what's going to help us achieve this goal collectively and keep people, you know, in their homes for many generations and, and add the density we need. So, yeah, going outside the scope, very much so, but.
Yeah.
It's interesting that you bring this up, because we, the city of Berkeley and the city of Sacramento, which has also recently passed the middle housing package, were approached by the Turner Center, is doing this, this sort of thing, trying to create like workshops for smaller developers, developers of color to be able like.
Yeah.
Get into this somehow, you know, and there's definitely, you know, a lot of complexity on the portable side, and on the private side, it's different, but there's, you know, definitely some interest that's sort of consistent with what you're saying, that they're trying to organize.
Yeah.
Have they considered putting staff, particularly building staff into that process? Because at least with, with accessory dwelling units, we're still having unnecessarily long delays because the certain staff don't know the work. And zoning can sign off, but there are other departments that just, you know, so it, the applicant often educates our staff because they have to, and sometimes they give up and just do it what the staff wants, even though it's not what the law requires, in order to just, you know, to get the damn thing built. So, you know, if you have any opportunity to talk with Turner Center, I mean, the same program should be applicable for training our staff, decision-makers, as well as the developers.
As partners.
And they may have a different, they have different liabilities, so they have a different point of view, but it's the same information.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. Anyone want to move to adjourn? Nickaton Sanderson? We have to do roll.
Yes.
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 Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Marston?
Yes.
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 Hope to see you all in November.
Well, no, it's different because there's a lot of zoning districts in, in District One and Two, so they.